Let's see. Have board members had a chance to review the minutes? Yes, if not, yes, no, okay. Is everyone ready to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Great. Anyone want a second? Two seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the minutes have been approved. We can move on to regular business. Frances, WLS report.
Okay. Okay, Madam President. On behalf of the WLS Board, I may extend very warm congratulations to the Library Foundation, and library directors, staff, and volunteers for an absolutely excellent weekend we had the other day. It's kind of scavenger, and I don't know how to pronounce it.
Scavenganza.
Alright, scavenganza, alright, scavenger. Alright, and I attended it even if I don't know how to pronounce it.
It's okay.
And the family affair, it was absolutely wonderful. It should have been called a fun weekend. That was excellent. I let my colleagues in the board know about that as well. WLS Board has resumed its work after a recess of summer, and we had our first, should I say, board meeting when we met on the 28th of September. And the first order of business, of course, was to look at the construction funds. As you may know, the state approved or allocated $34 million for the current fiscal year for the whole state. And of that, our Westchester Library System is a share of 1.6 million. And that's based on the population. I think we are now about 1 million from 900 or something, then about 1 million. So a total of 15 libraries applied for a grant for the present cycle. And all the applications were found to meet the established criteria that were set by the Construction Committee of the State of New York Commission's regulations. And just to refresh your mind, this criteria includes effective library service, more efficient utilization of library building, improved access to and use of building services, and the provision of library services in communities which are geographically isolated or economically disadvantaged. And you realize that all these criteria have been met very adequately by our library. And so the 15 applications were reviewed by the PLDA and then submitted to the board for approval. The total amount for all the 15 comes about $1.3 million. And of that, I should say that all the applications by the 15 libraries were approved. It just shows you that the libraries did a thorough job, consensus job, and the committee simply found no fault with it. And the committee on board was satisfied with that. And I think that's a credit to what our libraries are doing. And so they pretty much got everything that they asked for, including our own library in a location of $342,674, who was approved. Very informed about that. And this is the highest allocation of all the 15 libraries. And this is for the renovation of the third floor, which last weekend we saw how wonderful it is coming up. So just one commendation to our library project. So the board approved these allocations. The next business, I think, the board briefly reviewed after resuming its work from the recess, reviewed the state of the libraries in the light of the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm pleased to say that the libraries are more or less back to normal, depending, of course, on each library and in their peculiar situation, and also the directive they get from their board. Some boards are a little conservative perhaps, and courses are some more progressive and so on. And I think our own library has done extremely well in this regard. And to the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware of any fatality from the COVID, like deaths of the staff or anything like that. These things are important to mention. There's not been that, and that does really happen. Nor has there been any significant damage to the libraries as a result of this dreadful tornado either. And so that's nice to report. I have already circulated the report of the executive director. I find the report quite useful because it makes my life a lot easier. It summarizes everything that WLS is doing. So it makes life extremely easy for me. But I like to draw your attention to a number of things, if you have the report or not, doesn't matter. One is that the trustee training opportunity. This is coming up this month. I think it's next Monday, Tuesday, October 19th, from 5:00 to 6:30. You are required to register for that. This is a trustee training online, and it will be devoted to duties and responsibilities. So the WLS trustees will be there, and I expect that as many of you as possible should be there as well. You are required, of course, to read the relevant chapter on responsibilities from the handbook if you have it. It's fine if not, maybe you can get it from somewhere. I expect that this training should be useful and interesting in the interest of improving our work as a board of directors. So that's one. The second one is the...
Frances, could I just interject you something? Sorry, I just wanted to add one thing to Frances's comments about the trustee workshops that will be happening over the next three months. And this was an email that was sent to me today by Terry Kirshner, myself, and all the WLS directors. And there's a new law on the books for the State of New York, and it relates to library trustees for public libraries and association libraries. And it's effective January 1st, 2023. We have a little time. All trustees will be required to attend two hours of trustee training annually. And again, it begins on January 1st, 2023, and the topics are, as you might imagine, financial oversight, accountability, fiduciary responsibilities, and general powers and duties of a trustee. And then, once completed, the certificates by law are supposed to be filed with the president of the library board, which means essentially the administration. And so just to let you know that not this year and not next year, but the year following. You have to go back. You have to go back to school. So sorry, I just thought it was worth sending out.
Put it on the calendar.
That is true. We were informed about this actually in the board as well. So a little pressure thing put on us to get these things.
And I mean, what makes it easy is if WLS continues with this sort of workshop, that you can do it in person or via Zoom and receive the certificates, and it's just, it's out of the way.
Would any of the series on the second page count towards that, even though they're in 2021?
I can find out.
Just curious.
Yeah, I'm thinking not, but I can find out that.
Probably not.
But let me, I'll email Terry, and I'll send an answer out to the board.
And as a reminder, can you re-up that email from Terry? Because I think they have the links now to register, if you could...
Promised, I'll do that. I'll do that tonight or tomorrow.
I think to answer the best question, based on here, it's required that it's into our trustees' train annually.
Annually.
So even if we do it this year, it won't happen.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Will there be certificates issued for this year even though it's not required by law yet?
I don't know. Just attend this thing. Don't ask too many questions.
I'm posing that question.
Just attend this thing.
We know best, we have best answers. Yes, please.
Certificate or certificate, oh, you can give anyone.
My scrapbook. And then it gets filed in the two years. Great.
So that is a training, trustee training opportunity. So take advantage of that as you can. The second thing I like to draw your attention to is the digital equity project. If you read that section, it'll give you an idea of what WLS and the libraries are doing to deal with this equity divide issue, which is quite a significant challenge for our area, and is being addressed through this series of projects that are described in here. So if you have time, take a look at that. And the last one is the, you know, that the final draft of the IT Service Level Agreement SL has been completed, reviewed by PLDA, and I think it's been circulated for comments and so on. It is assumed that the libraries will have that discussed by their respective boards and so on, and then respond to it. Some libraries have done that. I think we are in the process of doing that. So that is really it as far as the activity of the WLS is concerned. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Frances. Up next is the president's report, so that's me. I just wanted to echo Frances's enthusiasm about the scavenganza and about the October 3rd Family Day, which was a real fun day. My children brought library books to the library, their own. I tried to tell them. Don't do that. But they're readers. It was a really, really phenomenal day. The library was packed, there were kids everywhere, families everywhere, and we had the ribbon cutting for the second floor renovation. And it was just a day to feel really, really good about the library and felt like a rebirth after a long period of stagnation. I also wanted to just mention that the survey for our strategic plan, the period ended on October 3rd as well. And we are, the Strategic Planning Committee will be meeting with Public Works Partners to review the first draft of the strategic plan and give feedback and discuss, and we'll just keep everybody posted from there. And as part of that, we did have our successful, I think it was September 29th, so we're going back a couple of weeks now. We had our last community meeting, which was energetic. It had fewer people than the one we held in July, but it was still really great with some really good feedback. And I just wanted to just put a note of congratulations to Tom and the library staff for hosting Superintendent Jonathan Raymond for a town hall, which I thought was, you know, a great step towards, you know, more collaboration. I heard Superintendent Raymond talking about having a parent room with all sorts of resources that we have here. And was just thinking how great that is, but it just really spoke to the need and, I think, desire on the part of many to be efficient in use of resources and also collaborative. And I think we've all been kind of looking at that as a kind of a future partnership. So it was a nice first step, not first, but kind of a nice step in that direction. So nice job, and thank you. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you. And here's the director's report with Tom.
Thanks, Whitney. And I just, I'm going to echo what I heard earlier. First of all, relative to Frances's comments about the foundation weekend, it was tremendously successful. We had lots of folks in the library both on Saturday and Sunday, and it was great because our library frankly has been quiet since the pandemic. And even though we're open and we're building back up, it was just wonderful, in particular on Sunday, to see so many people, so many families, so many little kids having fun, you know, participating in programs, you know, cutting a few moves on the dance floor. It was just, it was a great day. And our ribbon cutting was also, I thought, very meaningful, given, you know, what we've accomplished and what we have to continue to work towards in terms of that floor and what we have to look forward to in terms of the third floor and other parts of the building. And the foundation, we are just really extraordinarily lucky to have an advocacy group and a fundraising group like this, these people who are all volunteers, who are dedicated to assisting us and, you know, have given us over 25-plus years, well over $2 million, and tremendous boosts in the community. So we're lucky, we're very lucky. And just as a sidebar, in terms of fundraising, I know the foundation, as part of their scavenganza, raised, hit their goal of 60,000 and exceeded it, and nearly, nearly, just short of 70,000, which is really amazing for a one-day event. And this was an event that was postponed twice because of, you know, the pandemic. And so it was, it was really something special. And just time, and before I go on, I want to thank, there were so many library staff that made this happen, particularly Lisa Itskowitz, who was involved in this, Nikki Fudge, Ed Roddy, our children's staff, our teen staff, and, you know, everybody. But those folks in particular worked really hard to make it successful. And relative to the school district, I have spoken and met with Jonathan Raymond on a few occasions, and we're resolved to someday actually have a real meeting. And, you know, he's just so busy, we were supposed to meet yesterday, and his schedule is, you know, it's quite, it's pretty intense. But, you know, we were able to make this community meeting happen. We've told them, and they know, we are here for them because they are us, we are all one together. And if they need the theater, if they need the meeting room, they just have to connect with us, and we're ready and willing and able to assist. And so we're trying to find other ways to collaborate on top of all the ways that we do on a regular basis. I did hear some disquieting news that you folks probably have heard, that the high school library is out of commission all year. I don't know if you heard that, which is really unfortunate. And we are trying to set up a meeting with the high school administration and the librarians to find out, what do you need? We can't really tell them what we can do. We can react to what they tell us their needs are and try to find a way to make it happen because it's a tremendous misfortune for these kids who have been dealing with a lot of misfortunes these last few years, to lose the library in school. But, you know, we're the public library, we're their library, so we're going to hopefully get a chance to figure it out and make a difference. Just in terms of what's happening, as you folks know, we are coming back, we're getting busier, slowly but surely. We are picking up steam, which is really makes everybody happy because it's been so quiet, it's just a little unnerving. But people are coming back in the library, and they're using us in different ways. We have, our teen room is really busy and a little boisterous sometimes, but it's there, and we have kids coming in, and it's terrific. Our children's area is picking up at both buildings. We're seeing a lot of computer usage, as you might imagine. We're starting to see our job coach person be more engaged, both virtually and also, you know, per hours of operation, you know, in the building on Tuesday evenings. Let's see what else. And of course, Wi-Fi usage too as well. So it's all good. And study rooms, I have to say, study rooms are becoming more and more important since people are looking for that third place to maybe do some work that they otherwise are not feeling comfortable doing in their home because of a variety of reasons. And it's great because we've added new study rooms. We have two study rooms that are being installed as we speak on the third floor, memory of one of our pages who very tragically died during the pandemic, suddenly, unexpectedly. So we're seeing that that's really something important, and part of our third floor renovation project is calling for more meeting rooms and study rooms. And we think that's what the community is really seeking, you know, and we're going to be there, and we'll have some technology there too as well to maybe assist them if they have, you know, some needs over and above, just trying to find a quiet place to study. Frances talked about the two grants. Main library is $342,674. We have to come up with a match of $114,224. I've already put Chris Zellin on notice that we're hoping that they can help us, and she sighed and said, okay, you know, we'll deal with it. And, you know, it's still not approved, it has to go through the channels, you know, in the State of New York, through the State Library and the Dormitory Authority. And the other grant that we got, because we're two buildings, we get to apply for two grants every year, is our Huguenot Children's Library Building, and we applied for a grant to change out the three, like ductless mini-split air conditioning units that were installed by the partnership way back at 1998. And so we did get that money too, which means $17,813, and we have to match $5,900. Sounds good. So we're excited about that. Second floor phase, you saw the ribbon cutting. We're not quite there yet, it's a little frustrating. We're still waiting for our beautiful new information desk, we're waiting for our great new computer area for the public, we're waiting for our business center, we're waiting for shelving. So there's still pieces that have been unduly delayed because of this ridiculous pandemic, but, you know, we have the understanding that some things are going to be arriving in the next few weeks, which is exciting. Let's see. We have a few projects that we're closing out, and Gene Manning is working with the state, which has changed things. There's more people involved in scrutiny, which means more, you know, we have to make sure we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed, which is fine. It's a lot of work, but we're so grateful because, you know, over these last 15 years, we're about $2 million of state grants, which is almost double any other library. Not to be rah-rah competitive, but, you know, it's exciting. Why not New Rochelle? So that's that.
And that money is competitive.
It is competitive. It is.
It really is.
It is.
We should feel good about it.
Yeah, it's allowed us with the foundation stepping up and making those matches to physically change the library. And, you know, this room is an example, and so many other spaces that have been improved and made more relevant and attractive, it's because of those two revenue streams, the state construction monies and the foundation, you know, stepping up. I've been in contact with our AARP tax prep lead volunteer, Tim Ober. He's quite a terrific gentleman and so dedicated to, you know, leading the team that provides tax assistance for over 1,000 New Rochelle residents on an annual basis. Last year was available, but it was far smaller because of the pandemic. And Tim and I are trying to, we talked, and we're trying to figure out a way that his team will be comfortable providing that service. And they want to provide a service model that people want, and I said, we will work with you because our community misses that assistance. So many people depended upon it. Our staff said, among the most phone calls we got during the closure during the tax season was, you know, are you open, are these people there? We need this help. So we're trying to make that happen. Let's see. Oh, just, in years past, the library board has been represented in the Thanksgiving parade, and the Chamber of Commerce just announced that indeed there will be a parade this year. Last year was a postponement, and it will happen on Saturday, the 20th. In previous years, we had this gorgeous library float, but the float was housed at Ward Acres in that barn that was in pretty poor shape, which means the float got damaged and had to be kind of junked. It was a real shame because a lot of local volunteers put in a lot of time and effort. So having said that, the foundation plans to march and hold a banner, and I'm offering that opportunity if the board wants to do that. We can do that, it doesn't cost any money, we have the banner, get some good exercise on a, hopefully, a nice active morning. So if anybody...
What time does it start?
It starts in the morning, it's usually sort of a nine-ish or so, 10. You know, it really depends upon everybody kind of lining up. Is it 10? Oh, is it? Right, there's usually the event at the high school.
I can't eat breakfast, but I don't think it's happening this year.
So if people are interested, please let me know, and we can register. We can walk separately, we can walk with the foundation, you know, it's what you want and just keep you posted. You know, I don't need to mention this, but every year, New Rochelle has this amazing Arts Fest, and it's usually in mid-October. And once again, Arts Fest will arrive in New Rochelle. And it's really, I mean, the program that the Arts Fest Committee, led by Teresa Leghorn, who of course is one of our stellar lights for our library advocacy groups, is really significant, and there's a lot of programs here at the library. There's a cabaret tomorrow night, which sounds sort of fun, a trio of artists who combine jazz, rock, blues, classical, and world music. And there are lots of programs on Saturday and Sunday, both for adults and kids. We have Swan Lake, we have a really popular program by Reed 650, Spoken Word, it's called Haunted. You know, there's just a lot of great programs throughout the city, but here at this library and at HCL as well. And I would recommend, if you have some free time, it might be worth your trip here. Let's see what else. And just to mention, the friends, after having been struggling with having lost people, are getting a few more volunteers back. They had had an embargo at any donations, but now they're saying, one little bag, one little box, and that's it. I've talked about the foundation and all their good work. That's it.
Excellent. You want to talk about the operational status of the library?
Yep, you know, we're open, we're almost back to where we were in terms of our hours, in terms of services. We are still expecting all of our patrons and staff to properly mask, stay distance, use hand sanitizer when appropriate. We've been doing programs outside, we have that great tent here that will go away at the end of October. We might want to think about buying a tent for the future. And we're going to very gingerly try to program here during the winter months. Hopefully, things will be in such a place that we can do it. And if we, and when we do do it, we will be not allowing the theater to be full for obvious reasons, there'll be vacancies between groups of people, just to be safe. So, you know, computers are working, we've increased our broadband significantly from 300 something or others to 500 something or others. And that's thanks to the E-rate monies. And, oh, just one E-rate announcement, and you had seen it before, but yesterday we got word that a new program, it is called the Emergency Connectivity Fund Program. This is a new program certified by the feds. We applied for $87,313, and this program seeks to help libraries for reasonable costs that relates to eligible equipment and broadband connections used to help students, staff, patrons who otherwise lack access to the internet and technology. We got it all, the money we asked, we don't have to match a penny, which is even better. And this will allow us to purchase 50 Wi-Fi devices with a one-year license, 100 Chromebooks to distribute to the community. So that's, we just got the word for that. No match, which is a cool thing, and our community will now have even more access, and they can come here and do that.
Is this renewable as an annual grant?
No, that's the, at this point, this is sort of an embryo. It may continue, you know, and we've heard rumors that it may be folded into the E-rate program, which of course we received $102,000 for. So we're hoping that it will because the problem is you have all this, you have all these great things, and then, you know, when you run out of money...
Right.
Now, Chromebooks can always be used here in the building because we have Wi-Fi, but the Wi-Fi units, you know, we have to think about it. But this is our chance to help the community immediately at no cost to us, so we thought we had to go for it.
And now, is this a reimbursement-based grant? So we have paid, we will pay for it and then submit?
We're supposedly, according to what I understand, we're supposed to be getting the grant monies in the not-too-distant future.
Who comes in first?
Right. And so we're hoping, we'd like to, you know, not that we don't trust the federal government, but...
It could take a while.
Love to get the money first before we go forward.
Excellent. Okay, and then personnel report?
Yep, I have a little bit there. One quick thing, our Wi-Fi is going to be down on Monday in the morning. One quick thing, our Wi-Fi is going to be down on Monday in the morning because we're upgrading that, making it better, you know, currently this building, our Wi-Fi is not great in certain corners, like our ESO classrooms, people are always complaining of study rooms, but we're on it, we'll have a better system, you know, by the end of next week.
Is it during the day?
During the day, that was the only time that they could do it, so it's at 8:30 in the morning and, you know, we're hoping that it'll go well and by the afternoon-
Should be back up.
And our, and our social media people are on it, they're letting people know that if you expect to have it, you know, for that morning, we're sorry, a delay, but it should be up and functional shortly thereafter.
Great.
As you know, I've sent out announcements about our success in filling some of our vacancies and I'm very excited that we are bringing on board two new people and promoting someone very deserving, David Torres, who's our librarian two, adult services, and David's been with us, it's hard to believe, since 2003, and he is going to be the assistant head of adult services and he's, has worked hard his years and has always thought and stretched in different directions, so it's well-deserved. We also had an exciting addition to the staff as of November 1st, and that is a gentleman by the name of Milton Cobb Jr. And Milton had, went to wonderful schools at Cornell and Syracuse and grew up in Mount Vernon, and he will be our librarian two in charge of circulation services. His references were stellar, he certainly was a bright person, but he has a lot of energy and we see him managing that department, that first-floor information desk, and because of his background in youth services and programming, Milton, we also expect, will, will provide some assistance in our, our teen areas. He's a real good, he's a techie, so we'd like to have him teaching too and he's, his minor at Cornell was Africanate, so he had already talked about he'd love to get more immersed in all of our program and thinking about Black History Month too. So we're very excited to see Milton join the staff and you'll all get a chance to meet him not, not, not-too-distant future. Librarian one, Brian Semek, who had worked for us part-time some years ago, also a really bright fellow, comes with a great educational background and, you know, he's working part-time at two libraries now and we're very excited to add him to the staff. We actually tried to offer the position to a candidate for our librarian two in children's, she was really bilingual, perfect candidate, just wasn't ready to move her family, you know, which is understandable. So we're going to be putting that position out there and hoping that, you know, we'll get good candidates like that, that, that person was. We are about to interview for the library assistant full-time position and Milton, who's not on the staff, he's going to make himself available for a couple of mornings so we can do that initial Zoom interview with some, a really good group of candidates. And then second interviews will happen and Milton will be on board and so we'll all get a chance to meet the finalists for that. I know there's just so much going on. I should say that we did hire a, an hourly librarian for the archivist position, her name is Patricia Perito, and she has a local history background but has just retired as a, as a WLS director and was looking to continue to be involved in the library world and this was a good fit. There is, there is a lot, our, the civil service commission agreed to our creation of the new programming position, who will do programming, who will manage our art gallery, be the curator and also be the, sort of the theater manager, and we're really envisioning using this theater more proactively in off-hours, we'd love to use it more on weekends because it's sitting here and, you know, we think there's a need. And tomorrow night should be an interesting, you know, example of a cabaret here in the evening and see, you know, see what kind of activity we, we see. And so that position was approved by the civil service commission, I just need to, we approved this, this position, the creationist position, last September. I'm probably going to need just a signed resolution, Whitney, asking you, you know, to testify to the civil service that, that happened and then we can start recruiting. And last but not least, for this update, the assistant director position closed, I'm really happy to say, with both of the searches, we think that we have many viable, strong candidates and, and so what we'd like to do is, I could share the, the, the resumes and the applications with Whitney and anybody else we'd like to see, we'd like to, we'd like to interview my department heads and myself, the first go-around on Zoom and then obviously a second, maybe third, and we, I think it's crucial to have the board, you know, have a chance to meet and chat and evaluate these candidates because this is indeed a pretty important position. With that, I only have one action to ask you to take, it's about David Torres. The other people that I mentioned that are being hired are, will not start until November 1st, so I have to wait to the November board meeting, you know, to get your approval. But if I could have a resolution that, that you, you agree to the promotion of library employee David Torres as of October 1st to the position of librarian two, his new salary will be $68,210.
Okay, I can make a motion to, I can make a motion to promote David Torres to librarian two position from a librarian one position with the salary Tom just stated, can I get a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any extension? Great, then the motion passes and congratulations to David.
Thank you, yeah, he's well-deserving and I am, I'm done, so thank you for your patience.
Thank you, thanks Tom. We are here at committee reports. So the budget committee doesn't have anything to report this time around, we don't do that yet. Buildings and grounds?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Community relations?
Just two things, so the first thing is, I want to congratulate our, one of our fellow trustees here, who was honored as woman of the year at the 59th Annual Golf Outing hosted by the fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club of New Rochelle, so let's give her a round of applause, Lucille Renwick. Congratulations, well deserved. The other piece is, there was a, a great reminder via email today, if you do not receive the emails that Lisa, community relations sends out, I can't remember about her early voting, you know, definitely check it, check it out on, on the website, in addition to, you know, requesting that information?
That's from Denise Link about-
Oh, yes, 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 yes. So definitely check out on the website and, or subscribe to newsletters if you did not get them already. And Denise Link has, for the past, I think, two or three board meetings, right, has sent out a very extensive summary of the work that community relations is doing, it's pretty interesting to get her take on it and the work that, that is being done. Definitely her stats has shown complete engagement with all age groups in regards to employment, ERAP applications for housing and rental assistance, and then a lot of referrals to community-based organizations, which is, again, going back to what we've always said, that public libraries are social hubs of connecting them with resources, so I'm glad that, that is being done. I, I personally feel that if she even be promoted even more, I don't think a lot of families know that. But going back to what you said, it's the most amazing thing, I was here at the town hall that superintendent did have, and again, just being a partner in that to be able to host in a downtown central location, it wasn't crazy attended, you know, they had some couple of people, I know there were people on, on Zoom, but my understanding is this is something that superintendent wants to do on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, so hopefully he likes our auditorium and will continue to, to, to have these type of conversations here. Across the board, there's one more thing, and I, and I, and I had a quick question, they did approach me about this and, and I was going to talk to you, board trustees in regards to this as well as Tom, Jazz Fest, so someone came up to me and why was the library not involved? And my, I, I got two responses, and the one response was, well, the library said they weren't interested, and the other response is, well, no one ever reaches out to, to the, the library, so I got two ends of the, of this.
Yeah, I, I really don't know, but I can inquire, I mean, you know, typically the library is always gate to partner when it comes to educational, cultural events, and I know we had a Jazz concert here just a few weeks before the big foundation event with Chip Shelton, so I know we were working with that, do you, who is the, who's the lead person?
So the city of New Rochelle was the lead for the Jazz and I know, and that's what I was trying to explain to them.
Was that Joe?
Commit, that's the development office.
Oh.
And my understanding, and again, what I told them, I was like, well, we're definitely involved with Art Fest, but I know that's a, through the council of the arts and not-for-profit, so-
I can tell you Daniel, depending, I never got any, you know, me myself-
And, and I, I, and again, as a trustee and a community member, I'm not surprised because I think we've had discussions before that the city of New Rochelle or entities really do not include us, only when they need us. So I, I just put that out there for the record that, you know, we're always willing and able, especially for these cultural-like events, where we are adjacent literally to the Ruby D Park, so I put that out there as in, reach out to us because we, we, we got some ideas too.
Could you talk about the South Line?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to know who in-
Definitely, absolutely, absolutely, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Before we move on to the finance committee, Francis, can you just pass over that attendance sheet you have there? Thank you. Just business. Great, finance committee.
Great.
So the finance committee met two weeks ago and we discussed, our favorite topic is, right now, finding a new banking relationship, which we agreed to move ahead with one of the, one of the groups that submitted their RFP, we're not going to disclose right now, hopefully we'll be able to disclose next month after some government regulation things happen on their side. But we're happy to move ahead and we've identified a partner we'd like to work alongside. Secondly, we have three resolutions, just to cover the matching funds for grants and also, is it there one here? To make funds available for future capital expenditures, so I'll read these off and then I'll need a resolution so I can make a motion to accept and I will bring that into existence. The board makes a motion to provide $72,136 from the operating fund balance for the purpose of meeting the match requirements for the Universal Service Administrative Company and E-rate categories one and two grant.
Okay, I can make a motion to provide $72,136 from the operating fund balance for the purpose of meeting the match requirements for the Universal Service Administrative Co. E-rate category one and two grant, can I get a second?
Okay.
Daniel, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Great, motion passes?
Yep. Second, board makes a motion to provide $122,058 from the operating fund balance for the purpose of meeting the match requirements for the New York State Library Passive Fire Safety Construction Grant. I believe I'm making the moves, yeah, I'm making a move, so, I'll make a move too, do that in a second?
Second, I'll second you.
Yep.
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, any opposition? Nope.
Last one.
Motion passes, great, go ahead Cory.
Board makes a motion to transfer $250,000 from the operating fund balance into the money market capital fund in order to make the funds available for the future capital expenditures, I'll make a move on that.
Great, Lucille?
So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, motion passes.
That is all I have from the finance committee, thank you.
Thank you. Personnel committee.
The personnel committee met yesterday in a meeting with union reps and requires additional conversation, so we are going to meet again and should have something, like an follow-up in a few weeks.
Excellent, thank you. Policy committee. Nothing this time, great, so hopefully next month we can have a couple of things that we'll be talking about, policies, special projects. I already discussed the strategic plan, where we are, and I will just repeat that the survey closed on October 3rd, we had, you know, to me it seemed so paltry as far as response numbers go, but according to our consultant Public Works Partners, they said it was actually really good. We had something like 1.3% response rate, sounds so sad, but they said as they go out in New York City, they look for like .002% response rate and so we should feel really happy. And, you know, what we want is to see representation from across the, the vast spectrum of our community and we're hoping that that's the case. I feel really good about the outreach, we try, we extended our survey time, we reached out to as many people as possible, and, you know, this, this is the time, I mean, of course, we're always here, we're always open, we're always willing to talk, so, so that's an ongoing process and I look forward to our meeting tomorrow with our committee to hear what the preliminary findings have yielded and we'll keep you posted on that. And I think that's it for special projects. Anything, anyone have any questions? Nothing, great, we're here at public discussion, Marjorie?
I'm very inspired to be in that location.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Being inspired.
Thank you very much. Then without any further discussion on the part of the board members or the public, I will make a motion to adjourn, can I get a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds.
It's overwhelming.
Cory? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, then we have adjourned. Thank you everyone.